Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator-controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator-controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting. Today is Thursday, November 16th. It is 8:30 a.m. I'm pleased to welcome my fellow commissioners, fellow staff, guests, public. Thank you so much for being here. Media. Appreciate everyone showing up this morning.
We have media.
Yes, we have media. So with that, I will start with public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the Finance and Physical Resources Committee this morning? Okay, seeing none, I will public comment. I will go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Are you, is there support?
Support.
All those questions, Amy needs to be pulled. All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. That moves us to item three, Human Resources 2018 Management Pay Plan Compensation Program. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to approve the Management Pay Plan pay range and wage changes effective January 18. Approximately 257 county clerical, professional, and management positions are covered under the Management Pay Plan pay structure. As authorized by the Board of Commissioners, the Management Pay Plan administrative process provides for periodic review and adjustment of the pay structure for MPP positions. Human Resources recommends that the MPP pay structure increase by 2% to maintain alignment with the market. MPP employees who meet performance expectations receive a 2% wage increase and that an additional $180,000 ceded as part of a multi-year strategy to address employee advancement through the pay range, and the wage ranges, wage increases are affected with the applicable pay period that contains January 1, 2018. Total increase to salary is $631,131.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's support?
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Questions and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I have a couple of questions for Amy, if she would. Good morning.
Amy, if you would just do your title, your name, because I've noticed when this gets recorded, people at home, we know who everyone is, but people at home might not. So we're gonna, I'm gonna start having that done, so that if anyone's following at home, they know who's coming up to the podium.
Sure. I'm Amy Rolston, the county's Director of Human Resources.
Good morning, Amy. What is the present rate of our CPI crisis?
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd have to, I'm not sure. What we do is we try to benchmark against what other comparable employers are paying. We have a survey that is produced by World at Work that gives us a cut of public sector employers in Michigan, and that's where we try to match up to.
Commissioner, I believe the number is 2.1% as of this period. I think that's what the number is.
About 2%.
2.1.
2.1. Yeah. Thank you. The next question, if I may, ma'am.
Sure.
Is the third dot, the $180,000. How is this allocated, or is this what we used to call the steps, or?
It does replicate what a step system would look like for a union employee. So yeah, so it is the money that drives the system that allows employees in the MPP to make it to the market rate for the job within five years of time in the role, assuming that their is acceptable.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Okay. Hi, Amy, questions? So this is a management pay plan, so we don't have step increases. They're just increases on performance evaluation and performance-based, correct?
Yes, the increases are intended to get people to certain milestones along the way to the market rate, but they are not formally called step increases.
Okay, so the term I haven't heard or talked about lately is the compression issues. Is that to help out with some of the compression issues that we're finding in some of our departments?
Yes. If you were to look at, over 80% of our employees are represented by some sort of union, and they have an automatic progression to the market rate over a period of approximately five years for, in most cases. So if we don't have that same kind of mechanism in the MPP, the result is wage compression. This helps to avoid that by same type of progression for MPP that exists for unions.
Right, but it's still based on performance-based. It's, as in probably the union employee, they go there regardless because of a step, which I don't totally understand. But with this, it's a performance-based system. They get evaluated, and if they meet the criteria, then they move on.
That's true. Yeah, it's with how the employees.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy?
We've been working on the compression for a few years. Is this the end of it? Is this something we're going to continue to see annually as an add-on to the 2%?
Yeah, in order to avoid wage compression, we have to fund the system enough to allow for employees to move through to the market rate, and that's above and beyond any kind of cost of living increase. So we would continue to see this on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of questions, hopefully the first one easy. Total increase to salary is $631,000. For what period of time is that? Is that for the calendar year?
Yes, it's a calendar year.
And the third bullet again, it says that employees who meet performance expectations receive a 2%. Many people in a year typically don't meet those performance expectations. Is that a pretty rare occurrence?
Yeah, it's a pretty low number. Most people meet the expectations in the eyes of their managers.
So there's a formal valuation done, and pretty much everybody gets this 2% in other words?
For the most part.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees?
I think that pretty much answers it. It's not for work over and above expectation, but it's meeting expectations.
That's right.
And then Amy, wasn't there a challenge with some of the management pay plan positions being less than people they were supervising?
Yes, and there are two pieces to that problem. The first piece is this, that there originally, at least in 2013, there was not a mechanism to help the MPP move to the market rate. So that helps to solve this. The other issue that we had is we did have some subordinate positions that were paid above market, and starting with new hires. That's the other piece to that puzzle, that the new hires are, is that the position is paid significantly above market, coming in at a rate that is closer to market.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to item number four, which is also from Human Resources, the labor agreement for Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the board to approve a five-year labor agreement for the period of January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2022, between the County of Kent, the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, and the Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association, and to authorize the board chair or designate to sign the agreement. The negotiating committee recommends approval of a five-year labor agreement with the Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association. Wages will increase 2% annually, effective in the applicable pay period each year. Either party may reopen the agreement during 2020 with regards to wages. In addition, the union may reopen the agreement regarding wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase greater than 2% for employees in another bargaining unit, or for all MPP employees. In 2018, the health care out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. The six-month waiting period for life insurance and supplemental life insurance eligibility is, and the total five-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $1,138,9.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Mr. Coleman?
Question for Amy. So in my day job, I'm kind of in the same phase, just submitted salary increases and everything for all the people who report up to me, but they told me our cost of living is more like 1.5, 1.6% compared to like 2.1. I'm going to make no attempt to get economists to agree, but what happens if, you know, in the out-years of a five-year agreement, 2020, 2021, suddenly CPI is at 4% or 5%, does the contract just stay at 2% all the way through the?
I'm gonna answer the first question, and then I'd like to introduce Stephanie Hernandez, who is the lead participant in this negotiation, who will field any additional questions. In the third year of the agreement, to both allow the employees the opportunity to reopen the negotiation for wages and in economic conditions that they feel are beneficial for that on their side, or if we have a serious financial downturn, the county has that ability in 2020. So three years into the five-year agreement, we both have the ability to mitigate that.
Okay.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you.
Oh wait, you know what? I'm sorry. I think there's one more part of Commissioner Coleman's question.
I'm sorry.
Right?
I missed the second part, or are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Commissioner Voorhees.
That was easy. Thank you, Chair. This is a normal five-year pattern we've been on with the, with this agreement.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Hernandez, and I'm one of the Human Resources managers. And this is something actually new. Previously, we had been on three-year patterns, and we decided to try a five-year this time. There's a lot of different things that go into it, but that's also why we put the reopeners in the contract, because a lot can change over a five-year period.
Make a second, if I may.
Sure.
Is the fourth bullet point, if you would explain a little bit about the $1,000 out-of-pocket increase-decrease. Let's just expand that. It's more than just prescription, but it's anything to do with health care? Is that the broadening, or?
Yeah, good question. The Affordable Care Act sets a ceiling on the out-of-pocket max that we can impose on a health plan, and the out-of-pocket max is inclusive of both prescription drug and health care coverage, but we provide those with two separate vendors. So what we did was we increased the health care piece of $1,000, and in order to avoid going over that ceiling, we had to have a corresponding decrease of $1,000 on the RX side of things. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
RX would now then be covered under, just defined as health care?
Yeah, but, yeah, there is a.
You can get, under health care, you can cover prescriptions.
Right.
Is that what, is that, is that true?
That's true, but there are technically two separate benefits. It got what's under the umbrella of what we would define as health care. It includes two separate components that are provided by two separate vendors. There's a medical insurance, which, you know, hospital, doctor appointments, x-rays, things like that, and then there is a distinct and separate RX component. So employees would have two different cards, for instance.
Now they'll have just one.
What's that?
Now they'll have just one, just the total health care.
No, they will still have two. Yeah, this is, nothing has changed in terms of how the benefits are provided. There are two still separate vendors. The only difference is the maximum liability for the employee under the medical side of that went up by $1,000, and under the prescription side, it went down by $1,000.
It might affect employees if someone's more on medicine than in care.
Yeah.
That can affect their.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. There's, excuse me, nothing in here that indicates approval by the bargaining unit? Did that happen? Could you say when and what that looked like?
Yes, the bargaining unit did approve us bringing this contract forward. We don't know what that vote looks like. They corresponded with us and let us know they brought it back to the membership, and it passed.
When did that happen?
A couple of weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, just a comment. I think the five-year agreement's great, and it certainly gives us an opportunity for those outgoing years, and we can get a five-year contract from all four of them. So congratulations.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I'd like to ask Amy, the six-month waiting period for the life insurance eligibility, that being eliminated, I think is a good thing. How was that identified and as something that needed to be changed for the employees?
This is a change that we made for a couple, the first of which being for our nonrepresented employees. We had already waived the six-month waiting period, plus the cost to the county is relatively insignificant. It's just the cost of a term life insurance premium for the first six months of employment for new hires.
Okay.
Anyone else? Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. I first want to say thank you for the work in getting these to us. I've been doing this a long time, and there've been numerous times, other commissioners probably recognize that too, where these have come six months after the bag, 12 months, and we're doing much better, and it's great to see these in November, no less. I also wanted to ask about the reopening, and I'm gonna stumble with terminology here, but the state regulations regarding bargaining agreements and the effect on wages being frozen while that's happening, those kinds of incentives, anti-union incentives. What's the effect of those? How does this affect those? So for example, if the county decides it wants to reopen, do those regulations affect that negotiation somehow? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, and I'm going to defer to Bob Chauvinic, who researched this matter, looking into the viability of a reopener clause.
Thanks.
What the reopeners provide for in year three is that either the employer or the union can reopen on wages only, and that each party has all the rights they would otherwise have had it been a full reopener, except that it's limited to wages. So for example, the union could call an mediator, or we could, either party could apply for fact-finding, and we would not be able to make a change on our side until fact-finding was completed. So all the normal rules apply, except it's limited. The other statute we looked at was PA 54, which imposes penalties on employees if a new collective bargaining agreement is not in place by the expiration date of the old agreement. And we were concerned, not just us, statewide employers were concerned, could a reopener somehow trigger that? Our concern was reduced somewhat by the factors are very, very common, and no one has ever alleged, except in one case, someone alleged that it would trigger PA 54. That went to the Michigan Employment Relations Commission, and administrative law judge said no, PA 50 board does not apply. It was not appealed to Merck, and in consulting with our external labor council, they believe from their networking that the risk is virtually nonexistent. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy? No, I'm good, thank you. You're good, okay. Voorhees?
Just to come back, I appreciate the incentives to get agreements early like this, because I can remember when I would wait, or the mayor's hat, we didn't have any of that. And sometimes it really obstructed progress for both sides, I believe, and so I appreciate that.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We go to item five, also from Human Resources, labor agreement with the Circuit Court Referee Association. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the board to approve a three-year labor agreement for the period of January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, between the County of Kent, 17th Circuit Court, and the Circuit Court Referee Association, and to authorize the board chair or designate to sign the agreement. Wages will increase 2% annually, effective in the applicable pay period each year. The union may reopen the agreement, wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase greater than 2% for all employees in another bargaining unit, or for all MPP employees. A second tier paid time off and vacation accrual will be implemented for employees hired on or after January 1, 2019. In 2018, the health care out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. A six-month waiting period for life insurance and supplemental life insurance eligibility is eliminated. Total three-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $109,254.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion moved and supported, and we'll have questions, comments, and discussion. Commissioner Voorhees?
If I may, ma'am, thank you. So this is probably our smallest bargaining group? Has that ever been looked at to be incorporated, or if you can? Is this the smallest bargaining group?
This is our second smallest bargaining group.
Second smallest. Okay, I guess that's my question.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Oh, thank you. This is the three-year agreement. Couldn't buy a year agreement? Is that why it's a three-year agreement?
That is. We proposed a five-year agreement, they brought that back to their membership, and they did not agree to the five-year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item six, also from Human Resources, labor agreement, Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Local 214, Parks.
Yes, this is a request to approve a five-year labor agreement for the period of January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2022, between the County of Kent and Parks Department's Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers Local 214, and to authorize the board chair or designate to sign the agreement. The negotiating committee recommends approval of a five-year labor agreement with the Teamsters Union. Wages will increase 2% annually, effective in the applicable pay period each year. Either party may reopen the agreement during 2020 with regards to wages. In addition, the union may reopen the agreement regarding wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase greater than 2% for all employees in another bargaining unit, or for all MPP employees. A second tier or a paid time off and vacation accrual will be implemented for employees hired on or after January 1, 2019. In 2018, the health care out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. The six-month waiting period for life insurance and supplemental life insurance eligibility is eliminated. The total five-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $330,642.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion on this one? Commissioner Hennessy?
This particular one is, of the three we've handled, is the only one that references second-tier provisions, but it's not in terms of pay, other than it's in terms of time off and vacation.
Yeah, of the three contracts that were forward for, requests for approval today, two of the three included second-tier for benefits. The prosecutors did not, because the agreement that you're being asked to approve today is a two-minute. So the last time we negotiated, they did accept the second-tier benefits. But the other two include the second-tier benefits. Neither include a second-tier wages, because we looked at market for these two units, and we didn't feel it was warranted.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just, this is the first time I see a condition in here for MPP employees, and I'm thinking, and I may have my facts confused, but when the MPP employees took a hit during the recession, I don't think the bargaining units were held to the same kind of cut. So I'm wondering, why is the MPP employees included into the reopener as one of their conditions? I have a hard time tracking that.
And I guess my orientation is more future-looking. What I try to do is match up the pay classes that we put employees into with what the market would value those pay classifications. We do validate from time to time that our jobs are consistent with what the market is paying, but at this point, I don't have any evidence that would show that our MPP jobs are not aligned with market. So I felt comfortable making that commitment.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Amy and team, for all the work, effort, hours of negotiation and discussions put into these. I know it's a lot of effort to get to this point, and from here, it goes on to the full board, so thank you very much. That gives us to item number seven, for the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting this morning, for Parks. Some Park fee adjustments proposed. Wayman?
This is a request to the board to approve changes to certain Parks Department fees effective December 1, 2017. Departments are required to annually review fees as part of the budget process. The Parks Department is recommending the following adjustments to existing fees, which you see them listed here, for shelter and picnic rentals, Wabasus Lake Campground, Kaufman Golf Course. And enclosed shelters and the Grand Pavilion are in high demand for weekend. The proposed increase is not expected to reduce demand. The proposed fees increases for camps at Wabasus Campground are adjustments to mirror the. The proposed fees increases for camps at Wabasus Campground are adjustments to mirror increasing market rates. The fee injust, the fee changes at Kaufman Golf Course will make the rate structure consistent with the industry's move to dynamic pricing and allow rates to be adjusted based on demand, weather, and availability and maximize revenue.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Supported. And questions and comments and Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Rog. Your last bullet point where it says maximize revenue, I, I need some explanation on that. I mean, you're doing, do we do this just to offset costs that are incurred? Are we just looking at the market and seeing what we can get as compared to other golf, for example?
Well
And again, for those at home.
Roger's buying parter.
Thank you.
I got ahead of myself.
All right, we got it. Go ahead, Roger.
The, the golf industry is moving toward a, the dynamic pricing. It's, it's an online and whether you, and through the online process, they may adjust that pricing much lower or airline. And so, rather than to, to have a course on a cloudy day with fewer people playing, if we can adjust our rates a little lower to reflect, then, then we'll hopefully pick up some golf.
So, you're hoping to get a little flexibility, get more
That's all we're looking for and logically, we're not going to operate at the max rate for most of the time.
Got it.
Hey, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Jones. I'm inclined to vote no on this. I, I was just trying to look through. I think in one of our reports that this past year, we will have collected $1 million more than we did the year before under fees. Are we feigning the people to death that, you know, I just think
Are you speaking of fees related to parks fees?
I don't know. I just remember a line item there. I'm trying to look through, find it, Madam Chair. But it said fees, revenue from fees.
Yeah, not certain, but some of the fee increases could be resulting from the economic conditions as we see the community continuing to rebound from the recession. For instance, restaurants, there are fees related to servicing restaurants, inspections. So, I'm not sure, yeah, so I'm not sure, I think you might be talking about roll-up, a roll-up of fees that we're collecting? Fees that we collect for registered Ds, for instance?
I'm going to vote no here in committee and then I'll look through that and see a little more. My concern is that, you know, we've increased our revenue in so many areas in which I've addressed, yeah, a couple at a time. But here was another one. If I remember in there, it was fees were also a big increase. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Hennessy?
Oftentimes, when we're increasing fees on, at our parks and the shelters, we see some comparisons to other places. We try to keep our, you know, in the, in the campsites as well, that we try to, you know, see comparisons and so that we don't go too high or too low. Do you have any comparisons here?
Yeah, I don't have them with me right now. I have campground with me. So, we do a comparison and we try to operate in the middle. We don't, we're not the highest and we don't want to be the lowest and, and so the, and I guess to some point of what was discussed before with our camp, with our park reservation fees, we're on a 12-month rolling system. So, we already have a lot of reservations booked for 2018 that are paying the current rates. They're not going to, we're not going to increase rates for them. We have one Saturday left at the Grand Pavilion, for example, for 2018. So, while the rate increase will go into effect December 1, what people are paying will probably happen in 2019 versus 2020.
Commissioner Talan?
Thank you, Chair. You know, generally, overall, I appreciate it and I'm in favor of the great work the Parks Department and other departments do in kind of being rates comparable to the market. And, and so I'm, I'm in favor of adjusting these because I understand the effect it has on the entire budget for the, for the Parks Department. I also want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. These rates sometimes keep people who can't afford to take advantage of these public amenities from, it prevents them from taking advantage of it. And I, I don't know what the answer is to that. I know that we, in some of our, our park features, we, we do make them available at certain times of the year and I appreciate that. I just want to encourage us to continue to think about that, how, how we can make these campground sites, picnic rentals available to everybody, not just those that economically can afford it. So, I think, thank you.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I noticed the price increases are between $2 to $25 on most of these line items. But when we talk about the Millennium Park Grant Pavilion, there's a $100 increase. Could you tell me why that increase has been recommended?
I, I think it's the size of the groups that use, the pavilion are much larger because the, the area is that, just that much larger. And like I mentioned earlier, we have one Saturday left for the 2018 season that have already been rented. So, I think the demand is also there and we're trying to recognize that and offset the cost of maintaining that site with, with revenue that comes in.
And the taxpayers that are using this, their taxes are also used for parks and recreation. Do you take that into mind when you consider the charges back to these taxpayers for using our county facilities and, and increases such as the Millennium Park Grant Pavilion moving to $700?
I guess they, you know, our revenues, about 45% of the total county park budget would be generated system-wide. And the other 55% is what comes from the County General Fund that's allocated to us through the budget process. So, we rely on the revenue stream or we wouldn't operate somewhere. You know, we can't, we can't keep doing what we do without the revenue that we generate. So, we understand that the taxpayers are paying, you know, 55% of the operation, but revenue has to make up 45% round numbers here. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, why don't we do a roll call vote on this, please? Commissioner Womack? Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennessy? Commissioner Talan?
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
We got two no's, four yeses, and one abstain. I'm a yes. I'm sorry, yes. Okay. Sorry. Okay, so motion, motion passes, right, ma'am? Yes, it does. Yes, it does. All right, that will go to the full board. So, that brings us to miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Hey, seeing none, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 5. Thank you, everybody, for coming in today and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.